And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Counselor Wood. Counselor Escobell.
Present.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Hardy.
Present.
Counselor Nysley.
Here.
Counselor Vendetti.
Present.
Mayor Villagrana.
Present. I would.
So before you make a motion approval agenda, we do want to add one item, which is discussion for the purchase of a water truck for the water department.
So may I make, could I please have a motion to accept the agenda with the addition of the water truck?
I have another comment. I would like to see six A put on until after an executive session tonight. With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I just like to have a conversation about the committees and their function before you make those appointments, please.
Yes.
If that's at all possible. I mean, if it's not, that's fine. I can live with it.
So I will still entertain a motion to the approval of the agenda, including the water truck for the water department.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items five A, five B, five C, five D, and the water truck.
This would not be approval of consent agenda. This would be approval of the agenda with that addition.
Okay.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call please.
Counselor Vendetti.
Aye.
Counselor Nysley.
What is exactly we're voting on now? The consented, the agenda?
This is the approval of the agenda with the addition of the water truck.
Okay, yes, yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Now we have administrative information, manager and council reports.
No, now we'll need approval of the consent agenda.
May, may I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, agenda items A, five A, five B, five C, and five D.
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Now, can I get the sheet for people that signed up for public comments? Before we go to the public comments, council reports. Mr. Vendetti?
I have no report.
Mr. Nysley?
None.
Mr. Escobell?
Basically, fire protection district, not a lot new going on. I just thanked everybody for everything they've been doing to help.
Ms. Hardy?
No report.
I attended the mayor round chat, round table, and we had the water committee meeting, the regional water committee meeting, and there was a lot of information given, mayor's chat, round table. Evidently, it had not been held for a couple of months, so it has been held. Other than that, I really attended other meetings, but in a lot of facets. So, having said that, if you want to, any questions, any discussion on any of these? None? Public comments. Mr. Baker, please state your name and address, sir.
Larry Baker, 131 West Main Street. I have two items. The first one, about three weeks ago, but maybe it's four now, time flies when you're having so much fun. That first nasty wind that we had, it blew the stop sign over on the northwest corner of Main Street. Right across the street from me. It's been laying over. I just wonder why it takes so long to get a stop sign to back up properly. So vehicles actually see the sign and, and abide by it. I'm not looking for an answer for the moment. Second thing. The, about four week, three weeks ago or four weeks ago, I noticed that the crosswalk signs were eliminated. On the crossing. Now, I always felt that they were, they served a very, very good purpose, but now they're both gone. Now, I've been told that that's a state mandate, that they take those sidewalks, those signs telling traffic to stop when there's people in the crosswalk. And I would like to know if that's a factual thing, or tell me, why don't we have it? Because that, that intersection has many, many pedestrians going across the street. And it is effective. So I just wonder why they were removed and why they can, cannot be put back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Aves, please.
Lori Aves, 127 and a half West Main Street. I'm actually reading a letter that Roger should be here reading, but his family is pretty much all ill, so I'm stuck again. This is the letter that he wanted to read tonight. Can't ignore the past. Many of city staff have not been here long enough to know the past as some of us do. We have had five different finance managers, four city clerks, three city managers, and four police chiefs. This amount of turnover in the past 12 years has led us to where we are today. Mike Patterson came in and played with the city for nine years. One of his first actions was to fire Dory Williams as city clerk. A long-term city clerk with background knowledge on what and how the city operated. City council must lead us back to a community that is trusted, truthful, and responsible for the actions that have occurred over this time period. This starts with answering the questions that the citizens of Florence asked on September 15th, 2021, three and a half months ago, that have still not been answered, even though the investigation of Mr. Patterson has been finished and he has been charged. No, the city owes the citizens an entire accounting of what this has cost the taxpayers, including insurance deductibles, severance payouts, et cetera. The city also owes the citizens answers on what were the mechanisms that allowed Mr. Patterson to stay in his position for so long, especially given his prior infractions. You cannot just ignore this issue and think that it will go away. When will we get the answers to these past questions? We hate to keep barraging the city for this information, but since no one seems to want to deal with this issue and communicate with our citizens, you're quickly reducing our options to get this information to only one solution. And the last thing the city needs is another lawsuit. Accountability must be taken by the city, those that allowed this to happen, so that we can put the processes in place so that it cannot happen again. Thank you.
Mr. Aves?
Maury Aves, 127 and a half, West Main. Couple of things. Attended court today for Mike. He kind of kicked the can, moved to February 7th date. And apparently is trying to change DA's and potentially locations due to conflict of interest that they've identified. So getting on to what I came for is just to bring you back up to date again to a while back, I indicated that Mike's house was put on the market. Mike quick claimed it over to his wife in his wife's maiden name. I now know that it is under contract, so it's going towards closure. So if there's any financial requirements, again, I warn you, you should get some kind of claim on that sale so that money doesn't disappear if you need it to cover future expenses due to Mike. So getting on to a couple of things. One, I think this style of a citizen discussion with council wasn't here a few years ago. Mike brought it in. I don't think it's good for a citizen to come forward with an issue, like say Gail did last week, last two weeks ago, and get zero response back. It should be assigned to someone to follow up on, and then follow up should be measured and accounted for. So I really think this part of the agenda should be changed back to what it used to be, where council could respond to an individual bringing up an issue during this session, rather than just a closed session to talk to council. It's really not the way to run the city on that, I feel. And the other thing is bills paid should be at the end of the program, not in the consent agenda that's approved before. I think you'll find there's many times that you approve the financial bills to be paid, and then later in the session, you talk about the issues some of those bills pretend, pretend to. So I think that the bills paid should be at the end of the session, or you should assure that there's no bills being paid that are associated during a session on that. And now getting into, I attended the past city-county meeting, I think it was held two or three weeks ago here in council. And there are three real interesting things that came up in there. First one is, we were informed by Commissioner McFaul that CDOT has got us moving up on the list to do some more work on Highway 115 between Canyon City and Florence. And that should happen the next one to four years, that we've moved up on the, on the mark to actually get that road made safer on there. The second thing that came up was the county at Pathfinder Park is going to start and have their plans out and build the arena that they planned out there in the park. And that's going to be a fairly large building, 150 feet by some 350 feet, that'll bring us closer to have the fairgrounds moved closer to Florence. And I've not heard anything about that. Hopefully, council's heard that some other way, because I know Anthony and Paul were both at that meeting, but I have not heard them talk about what happened in that meeting. And then the third one that came up is the VA apparently is looking for a more local place to have a clinic. And they, they would like to work with a building that already exists. Now, I know we have an agreement with St. Thomas More regarding this building. But I believe if we were to approach St. Thomas More, they might make an exception to allow the VA to open a clinic in this building and buy this building and move on. You know, there's two times in the past, even Mike Patterson, though I pushed this hard two and a half years ago and I ran for mayor, that this building is way expensive, more building than we need. We used to be in part of the fire department, that worked real fine. I don't think we've changed staffing that much, or the police department that much, not to get back in a smaller building. But if there's an opportunity here to bring a clinic for the VA, it's going to go somewhere in the county probably before it gets done. That this would be a great opportunity to make good advantage of this building, including the coop, which hasn't been marketed very well to find anybody that wants that. And, and work out a program with them to allow us to exist in here until we can have another building built, and they would be paying for that building. And secondly, to work with the St. Thomas More people to get their concurrence, that they would accept a VA clinic and not consider it to be a competitive offset to their programs. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips, please.
Hello, Nicole Phillips, 206 West 7th Street. After reviewing the minutes approved tonight, I noticed public comments made by certain individuals seem incomplete. It could be perceived that the city is intentionally omitting citizens' concerns when it doesn't align with the views and opinions of city employees. Council meeting minutes should be unbiased as they are public record of what occurred, not shortened by omitting pertinent information or dismissed. In the meeting minutes for October 18th and September 20th, 2021, both times former employees' public comments are worded in a minimizing manner and could seem misleading as to what was actually said. This is not transparency. Thank you.
Ms. Dodd?
Hi, Janelle Dodd, 534 West Main Street. Kind of going along that same theme, I just wanted to point out, tonight's agenda impact was not posted on the website. I actually had to go down to city hall and request it. And I understand there's some staffing changes, people taking on new roles and things like that. But it's been an issue in the past for other things. The planning commission meeting last week was rescheduled from December 16th, and that was never corrected on the website, despite knowing about it for a long time prior. So going along with the sake of, for the sake of transparency, can we please get things posted on the website? And I know that later this evening, you will talk about the resolution for the official posting location. I did bring that to you at a previous, a previous council meeting, and say that yes, we do need to post them in a physical location, but also consider a digital format. In reading the resolution, it doesn't mention a digital copy anywhere, and that's problematic for people who have accessibility issues or who can't leave their house to come to city hall every single day to check that bulletin board. So if you would please consider changing that policy, that would be great. Another thing is, excuse me. Some professionalism training perhaps. I noticed at the last time when I was giving public comment, there was some whispering going on amongst staff. And someone out in the audience was actually able to tell me what was said, and it was basically saying that I was attacking them. I was addressing a specific behavior, not a specific person. And I just think that's really inappropriate, because if someone's willing to do that in a public meeting, what's being said behind closed doors during the workday on taxpayer dollars? And are the employees of the city really supposed to report to them as HR, or as those leaders in those official roles for any sort of hostile environment, when they themselves might be creating it? So, just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Tim Jordan, 844 Sumo Avenue. I've been cold for like five days, so that's why I've got my hat on. I'm going to keep it on. One of the things is with, I didn't see the copy of the agenda today, other than on the bulletin board, and I was kind of in a hurry to see what was there. But I'd like to see something on the agenda to where with the consent agenda, council has the ability to pull something from the consent agenda before you vote on it. That way you can publicly discuss it, and if you want to put it back on the consent agenda and vote on it, that's fine. The second thing is, is, or sorry, back to that, is when you're paying the bills. I came here last, two weeks ago, I said you're pushing over $20,000 with employee, employee workplace investigations. And now rang up another $4,000. So I don't know what's going on here, but if you really want to move forward, stop having workplace investigations, you're spending our money, not yours. Every time you vote and you sign that check, you're spending my money and everyone else's in this room. And then I hear we want to move forward. So I think it's going to have to come from you guys and gals. Get done with the investigations and move forward. The last thing is, I would prefer and suggest that when meetings are over, you kill your mics. This room, you can hear things. If someone has a problem with the questions I ask, tough. If you don't like it, there's the door. And that includes your employees, okay? I've, I've said it once. I'm not going to say it again. Anybody has any questions or problems with the questions I'm asking, there's the door. I'm tired of hearing it. Thank you.
Mr. Clermont, please.
Bruce Clermont, 217 West 2nd Street. I noted the, in the citizen discontinuation of the trash service, April 1st. I'd like to protest that and ask that the trash service be reinstated, because I think it is a necessary and important city service, and I would like to see that continued. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council? If not, then we'll move on. To, the next item is the mayor's committee appointment and the parking committee. Discussion, Mr. Nysley?
Yeah, I wanted to discuss it in executive session, actually. I'm sorry. I actually wanted to discuss it in executive session.
Okay. We can do that. But now I will make the appointments to the parking committee?
If it wants to be discussed at a different time.
All of it?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Nysley, we will just discuss those in executive session.
Sorry, we're going to, we're going to talk about both the appoint, the appointments and the parking committee in executive session? Like, all of that's... Do we vote on if that goes in executive session?
My concern was the committees that, that we addressed before. We're all nonprofits, and I think we should go a different direction with those. I think we need to hands-on with our own administration, because we rely too heavily on the administration to give us facts, which are not always current and not always truthful. So if we actually do our homework and our due diligence, then we know what we're talking about, and not referring to the administration to give us our answers to tell the public.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we stay in line with kind of the message we've sent, that we're only, we're trying, I think that, well, I know that Mr. Allen had said it before, and that I strongly agree that we're going to use executive sessions very oh, we're not going to be as liberal about using them, so I just wanted to make sure it was definitely one of those things that had to happen in executive session versus just during open session. It's hard, because we don't have, I mean, is that, is that appro, do you feel, I mean, I would respect whatever you feel is appropriate. I just was going to remind that that's kind of our goal, is to talk about things openly. I don't know what exactly you're referencing, so if you do think it's better we start an executive session, I'm not, I'm going to, you know, rely on your discretion, but that was my, my feeling on it.
I'd sure love to lead off if I can, if you would like to discuss this now.
Well, let's do it in open session then.
That sounds great. A little over a year ago, I asked for a two-person committee to investigate Mike Patterson. I was denied. But yet, I was expected to attend nonprofit organizations' meetings to come back and give my, my findings with, with those meetings. That, that's not, that's not my job. If those nonprofit organizations really want to address the city, they need to come here theirself. My job is to make sure that the administration stays in line with what we say. Now, the only way that we know that, that they are staying in line with what we say is if we actually get into it with our own hands, with our own mind. If we have physical evidence, empirical evidence, that we can come and tell our people, this is what we found out. We can't ask Sean, we can't ask Lori, we can't, we have to know 100% positively from ourself that these things are being taken care of. I would like to see two-person committee formed for each, the, the police department, for the budget, and for human relations. I think if two people kept, kept on track with these organizations, or these departments, that we could get a lot better results out of, and, and a lot more assurances that we know what we're talking about. Instead of relying so heavily on the administration to tell us what to say. So when you're making these appointments, I would like to get rid of some of the, and, and I don't care if you keep the nonprofits in there, but if you're going to put me on a committee, give me something that I can do and dig my teeth into and do something good for the city, instead of doing nonprofit work. That's, you know, I'm here for nonprofit, absolutely, but I'm also here to make sure that this city does not go down in shame. And they, they deserve the truth, and they need to be told the truth. So that's why I'm asking for committee assignments to go, two-person committee assignments to each of those three departments, so that we can actually oversee them. We, there's been investigations that have happened that we've only heard rumors of, that stop with the city manager or the chief of police. We don't even know what's happened. We, we, all we know is what they tell us, and it's time for the end of that. We need to know for certainty that, you know, these people expect us to tell them something, but what are we going to tell them? What, we've heard from somebody else, third-hand experience? You know, that's not what they're expecting from us. They're expecting... They're expecting for us to get in there and do some work for what, you know, for their, for them. And so that's why I'm asking for these committees.
Discussion on Mr. Nicely's comments?
I think the only thing that we have to do is talk to the city attorney, because I know that there are some regulations about our interaction. My understanding through the trainings that I've seen from CML, is that it's, some of it, and I don't want to speak out of term, but my understanding is some of that is kind of beyond what we're allowed to even do. I think, like, we have to, I think that would be, I, I support...
But it's our due diligence to do this.
I support exactly where you're coming from. I was just going to mention as far as like a direct decision tonight, it is something that I, I believe if I understood the trainings I received, that there can be conflicts or problems, legal issues with us, providing that type of direct insight with just a couple of council members. Because you're, you're talking about like we would attend, like their, their, their meetings, their staff meetings is what you're saying?
Or investigate whatever we want to investigate.
And that we would be directly involved, okay. Well, I, I was just gonna bring up, I, I think that, I definitely think your spirit is in the right place. But it's definitely something we would have to take some time to make sure we've not violated any of those laws or expectations. It's frustrating, and I agree with you. It is frustrating, but one of the things that I, I, I've ran into when asking those kind of questions, I keep, from both the state level, the trainings they put out, and then also what our own attorney has said, is that there are definitely rules that kind of prevent, I don't know how to explain it, too much, like, one-to-one interaction with those department heads from the council. I don't understand it, I don't pretend it, but I do think we would have to talk to Matt. I...
Yes, and Matt also told us that we couldn't go to the DA with charges against Mike Patterson. Matt has misled, misled us several times, not that he's perfect, not that he intentionally misled us. But Matt is not an end-all.
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Escobal?
I agree with Allen. But there's only one thing you guys gotta remember. You all work, except for two or three of us. Are you gonna come down on your, and go to these meetings with these people when they're here?
I'm not working for them, they're working for me.
Okay, so you're gonna have to pay him overtime to come talk with him?
I don't necessarily need to be there when they're there.
Okay.
I need access to files, I need to, everything should be recorded, everything that's happened, ever, should be recorded.
Yeah, most of it is, as far as I know, but I don't know all of it.
Mr. Vendetti?
Yes, I would.
I think one place we ran into trouble, you said you talked to two people about investigating Mike Patterson. We are a council, we are seven people.
No, I did not say that. I said I asked the mayor for a two-person committee to be established for the investigative purposes of Mike Patterson.
Well, you should've talked to the entire council.
That was the mayor's duty. Whatever the mayor knows, he's supposed to share with his council. That was the mayor's duty. That is the pecking order.
I disagree, I, that's, we're a council, you should've brought it before council.
I actually brought it to you, Mike.
Go ahead to me.
I did, I actually did. I told you when I was going down to talk to the mayor, and what I was gonna request of him, and it fell on deaf ears. You know?
You're, you're suggesting two of us take a, a department, and then we are directly involved in their oversight? Just, just so I know that what you're asking for?
Exactly. And we're gonna get blamed for it anyway. I mean, if something goes wrong in that department, each one of us is held responsible for this. But by God, if we're gonna be held responsible for it, we need to be part of it.
You know, I, I think I know where you're coming from, Mr. Nicely. But sir, in looking over the assignments for city council, I, I have to take into consideration that four of the seven city council members all work. And three of us are free to attend a lot of meetings. And yeah, you know, there are committees that have been previously listed, and will continue to be listed, that don't even meet. But for the purpose of, in the event that they do happen to call us, we have a person to respond to them. But I certainly, will entertain that thought. And the acting city manager and myself have had a couple of discussions on the possibility of exactly what you're talking about. And hopefully, in the near future, especially after we appoint, or we hire a permanent city manager, this can be, come to fruition, you know? And, and it'll be what the city council would like to have.
So, I wanna add just one thing. I spent a lot of time this last year going through state trainings online, because I felt it was my responsibility, obviously, taking this position. And not from our attorney, but from CML. The, the messaging is that the, it is the job of a city council, whether our constituents like it or not, to have the vision. But we're not the means. So, when we talk about this city, they're very specific in the fact, and this may be news to a lot of people, it certainly was to me, about that it's not my job to know and oversee the finance department, or the police department, or the water department. My job is to have a vision that says, well, these employees deserve to be supported. They deserve to have everything they need to do their job well, we should be an excellent employer. And excellent employers don't necessarily micromanage every department, we're not even supposed to. What we do is we put in quality HR systems. We structure the accountability, the way we answer, so that HR person answers to the council. It's painful and it costs money, but you hire someone that is worthwhile, that knows what they're doing. But if you go back and you look at those trainings, the whole point, I think, is that we may not, we're not gonna be here forever. And the next person to take this seat, or your seat, may not be even close to qualified to oversee any of these departments. And what we really need to do is set them up so that they can continue to move forward with a good vision for the city. Not to micromanage qualified staff. I'm new, but what I could see where we went wrong is we just didn't have any of that stuff. And, and maybe it was the last city manager who capitalized on the confusion that was created by not having those systems in place. And I do get frustrated because I'm often asked by the public to answer to things that are beyond the scope of what we even do on a city council. And it's hard to express that to people, that the whole system is designed, that we are your vision. We set the vision and the goal, and we continue to guide staff towards that vision. But you're not elected to city council because you're an expert in city finance or any of the other departments, and you're there to micromanage those people. Now, we need to have, we need to be critical of the information that's put in front of us, we need to read it, and we need to ask questions. And we always need to be suspicious that anybody we do employ could end up being disappointing and do bad things. But I, I really, I don't, I don't think that what you're describing is a long-term solution for this city. Like, if you're not here in four years, you know, you're really giving a lot of responsibility to whoever else they end up electing, to like, really just, instead of just creating a system that already has those checks and balances in place. Do you understand what I mean?
Checks and balances in place. And we're, and I disagree with you, we are here to set policy. And unless we dig into this stuff, we can't establish policy to correct anything. We're just blind to what's going on, and we accept what they say as the truth, and we've accepted it for ten years, and look where it's got us.
I don't think it took very long for me to figure out that there were problems, and I didn't have all that background information. I was frustrated by the systems that were in place, so I do respectfully disagree that it is a system problem. Not a, not an issue of us going into the, their workspace and micromanaging them.
You know, I don't, I don't really, I'm gonna jump in here. I really don't believe that Mr. Nicely is saying micromanage. But I think Mr. Nicely is saying we best be better informed. Especially if we had conversations with the department heads, period. And I think that's important. I, I really believe that we need to be well-informed. It's not the question of, of us saying, do this, do that, do this, do that. The question is taking the information in, applying it to the agenda.
But my, my question is, aren't we supposed to receive all the same information at the same time? So the expectation would be, not that we have two people off of council going and having conversations privately with department heads. My expectation is if a department head is considering the need to do an investigation, that they contact the mayor, we call an executive session, and they tell all of us, at the same time, what's going on, and then we all can be involved. That we would set up a, like, once again, systems, that if you're going to deal with an investigation, you make it known to the council, that is the expectation. And those employment issues have to be dealt with privately, but we're all entitled to all the same information.
But that is policy you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, but, but that's exactly what I'm saying, is we write that policy, so we don't have to go in to each department and be assigned. You write the policy that you, they have to come to us when there's an investigation, so all seven of us...
Let me give you an example.
This conversation, and we can look at stuff, I'll quickly restate statute. CRS thirty-four, thirty-one, four dash two eleven, city manager powers and responsibility. The city manager is responsible to the city council for the proper administration of all affairs of the city placed in his charge. And to that end, and except as otherwise provided, in part, in this part two, he shall have the power to appoint and remove all officers and employees in administrative services of the city, except the city attorney and administrable judge. Appointments made by the city manager shall be on the basis of executive and administrative ability, training, and experience of such appointees in the work which, which they are to perform. All such appointments shall be made without deferment term. Two, officers and employees appointed by the city manager may be removed by him at any time for cause. The decision of the city manager in any such case shall be final. CRS thirty-one, four dash two twelve, council not to interfere, except as otherwise provided in this part two, neither the city council nor any of its committees or members shall direct or request the appointment of any person to or his removal from office by the city manager, or in any other manner, take part in the appointment and removal of officers and employees in administrative service of the city. The city council and the member shall deal with that portion of the administrative service for which the city manager is responsible, solely through the city manager, and neither the city council nor any member therefore, thereof shall give orders to any subordinate of the city, either publicly or privately, any violation of this provisions of this section by a member of the city council constitutes misconduct and is punishable in such manner as may be determined by the other members of city council.
So if you direct somebody to get you files...
Slow it down next time, please, Sean.
I will, I can send this all to you.
Thank you.
So if you direct somebody, if you go and tell them to get you files, we violated that statute. None of us can go do that, and so it's kind of a waste of my time anyway, because I can't... What it is, is it creates this middle man in the conversation. If there's a concern from a department head, we all need to hear it at the same time. It doesn't need to be interpreted by like one individual council member and brought back. I think your intentions are spot on on what we need to correct, it's just that, my understanding of what he just read is that we can't do it the way you're asking us to do it, because I can't even risk sitting alone and feeling like I'm telling Sean or any of the employees to do something, like give them direction, that's what that statute means.
No, you're not their boss, too.
So when I spend time with them and they report back, I personally would rather that conversation happen with all seven of us, because I'm only one voice, and I need all of you to hear the same information at the same time. I don't want to have one-on-one conversations without you about problems that the city's having, but I want those conversations to happen. And, and you're right, in the past, they didn't necessarily happen. And that was because there wasn't that accountability, we, we...
The purpose, my intent was not to micromanage.
I know.
The purpose, my intent, was to get information to bring back to council and give a report like we do committee reports. It wasn't to...
I, I know, I, I understand that, and that's why I think you were coming from the absolute right place.
I'll give you an example of why. When these, when, there has been incidents that have happened in the past, where there's been either sexual harassment, some type of misconduct, where the reports, the investigations stopped either with the chief of police, or with Mike, or with the city manager. Never went to us, we never knew anything about them. We had the right to know that somebody was being affected. We have that right, and we are expected to defend our employees as well. And we can't defend our employees if we're gonna stick our head in the sand and say, oh, well, nobody told me about it. That doesn't work.
I agree, that whatever happened, obviously, was dysfunctional, but...
And we, we can set up every policy, we can have the workshops, we can get all that, we can set up a hotline that would go to council, that way all council members are informed, in case that was to ever happen again, very unfortunately ever happening again, and so we can move on. So we, we can set the policies, we can set some stuff in place. So part of that's gonna be upcoming on the upcoming meeting, I'm gonna skip ahead just a little bit here, so we can get this, and then we can move on through the agenda items. There'll be an accountability report for twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, that'll list all the accomplishments from each department. At the second meeting each month, you will get a senior manager report, why I am in this position, that'll outline what all the things that are happening. If you guys have direct questions, you can ask me and I will get you that answer. So there is a mechanism, and we can absolutely address the things that you're, you're, you're doing in a different manner. That, that's not a problem.
You got hands up out in the audience?
Do we want to address the audience?
That's up to you.
They're part of our city, I'd like to hear from them.
Maury Aves again, one twenty-seven and a half, West Main. I support a lot of what I just heard. I have a couple concepts that I would've gone through and probably eliminated half these special committees, because I don't think they're worthy of doing anything, and I don't think they're getting anything done, just takes up time. The second thing is, I've gone to a lot of goal-setting sessions, as well as the one we had, I don't know, three, four months ago. And I think council needs to step up and set goals of what they want to see done, what roads they want to see improved. Hear recommendations from staff, but then you make the decision, want these done, and then there'll be some reports quarterly, how much is it getting done, why isn't it getting done, and take some, take names. Doesn't do any good to say you're gonna do something if you don't get it done. Budgeting, we've gone through some great years in, in tax revenues and everything, but yet I have not yet seen where our reserves are. I would expect growth in our reserves with the exceptional income we've been taking in. But I think we've spent it all, and we are not even providing for the time when the downturn comes and money gets hard to get. So I really think council needs to step back and actually set some goals for each department. Set some goals for the city manager to enforce at the department level. Have an action item log that tracks these things, so something gets done. A lot of people come in and say, I have a problem, I want something done. We say, oh, we're gonna do something. We, we never get it done, and there's no tracking to say, why didn't we get it done? Set some goals, set some dates, take numbers, and if they can't do it, start looking for new people that will get things done. So, thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm gonna, real quick, since we wanted discussion on these type of things, I'm gonna chime in on that. I absolutely agree with that. Okay, so on the goal-setting session, with the upcoming accountability report, we have numerous goals that are from each department. So, like with Public Works, we're gonna increase sidewalks, that's one of our goals. We're gonna do some paving, that's gonna be one of our goals. That is gonna be implemented for twenty twenty-two. And we've also been suggested that we do a strategic plan, so we can set the goals. We start budget talks early in July, so that we can start setting these goals, and then start figuring out the mechanisms to meet them. I can't speak on what was or was not done in the past. I can only focus on today and focus on tomorrow, which is what myself and the current staff is doing.
But what you just referred to is exactly, no, I want to comment on this. What you said is exactly, and Sean, I'm not a poser, I like you very much, I do. So don't, don't shoot the messenger, I'm just trying to work here. The goals that the administration has put out is not our goals. We go in there and we're asked, all of us are asked, what do you want to see done? We wanted parking done for the last ten years. Not one thing has been done for parking, not in ten years. The park, Husky Park, we wanted something done over there. We were supposed to have an exchange, and with TZAC for concrete for that park, nothing's happened that we've asked for. The only thing that has happened is what the administration has wanted to happen.
I have to bounce some of that responsibility back to the council. I had to learn, when I sat up here, that it's not good enough to say I want this done, that you set goals and time... Even the parking committee, at least I asked for a date for them to do it, and guess what? It looks like we're making pro, like, some of that is, why did the conversation stop? And so it is both sides, we can't just blame the staff. Our goal-setting is not done in a way, I was, I, I wasn't impressed with the way we do it. Not very many of us up here actually came and said, here are my goals.
We're tired of it, we're tired of not being heard.
Well, I don't know, I plan on setting some goals this year that are pretty definitive and realistic, and I'm not going to, I don't feel tired, I feel ready to go.
You don't feel ignored, ever?
Uh, no, I feel like there's a lot of chaos. I feel like there has been chaos, and I don't think that that is something that you can blame any of the, any of the actual employees. It, it was, it's the system, that's why I get frustrated about the stagnation in the conversation about HR. I get frustrated about the fact that that has not moved quick enough, in my opinion, on what we're going to do to provide them a good HR. I get frustrated with the conversation about how much that costs, because frankly, it's twenty twenty-two, and they deserve to have HR that they can depend on. it's twenty twenty-two and they deserve to have HR that they can depend on. If those things were in place, we could move forward, and you have to at some point look at yourself and say, okay, so when you asked for something to happen, how many times do you come back? And and follow through with it, or do we just wait for the staff to like feed us this information? And and what I've seen, and this isn't an attack on any of my council members that I've served with, I think, um, I respect all of you, but I do think that there was this bizarre culture where we would have conversations and then by the time we get to the next meeting, there wasn't even a space for us to talk about the things we thought were important.
Exactly.
Right, and so what we did with the, you know, new mayor and actually right before Mr. Upton left, uh, we re, we're trying to rearrange the whole, that's the whole point of rearranging the agenda, is to give us more um, freedom to have these conversations, and also it's the reason why we're not using executive sessions anymore to have these conversations, because that was another roadblock. If we're talking about it behind closed doors and then the, it's just, it's just another way to delay action from happening. And so I think we're all working in the right direction to fix those things, but I don't wanna sit here. Um, I'm not gonna lay that burden on the staff. They are there to run water departments, to keep our city clean and maintained, to keep our billing department working. That is their job. It's not to babysit me and make sure that I'm following through with my goals. And so I wanna be careful that we start with accountability with ourselves first, before we start going down the line and throwing other people under the bus. Personally, so if I'm not, until I can say, we are doing everything we can do, I don't wanna talk about the blame going somewhere else, because I don't think we do everything we can do as a council to be accountable. There, it's frustrating. We can't answer everybody's question. There are reasons we can't have certain conversations or we can't disclose certain information. But there are a lot of other things we can set up here and do that will drastically improve the way that this city functions, and it starts with us, not them.
And it starts with this agenda, you're right. And the agenda is not much changed from the last, since I've ever been involved.
Well, this conversation.
We still don't have, yes, we are, we're having some constructive, you know, criticisms right now, um, and I appreciate that. And that is what we need to move forward. Sorry, Maury.
And I do wanna say, we do have reserves. We do have reserves.
I haven't seen.
Quickly, Maury, because we have other people that wish to discuss.
That's okay. Um, these meetings can drag out, 'cause we need to make some changes. And if you're time-sensitive, I think it's time to kind of break that and let everybody talk. If it takes three hours, it takes three hours. But the goal-setting session that I've never seen here is staff comes up and recommends, here's the roads that need to be fixed, here's the priority of the sidewalks that need to be fixed, here's the budget issues that we should take care of, here's where, you know, safety issues are and so forth. Put that on the table and sure you're gonna get, you know, three million dollars worth of we need to do's. And then you need to come back and say which ones are priority, to be sure you're identifying, I want this done, I want that done, I want Husky Park brought to a plan, and get those going. And then you, again, you have to recheck it every few months, because things will change. Things will get done quicker, some things will get done slower, but you have to keep tuning that into what you want to see done by the end of the year. And have long-range plans, three to five years out, you know, like you have a long-range business business plan. And you have to manage that plan. You can't just do it once a year, walk away from it and think it's gonna get done. You need input all year long on changes to it. You need feedback to say, we accept that change, we understand that sidewalk's not gonna be fixed, because this happened and we're gonna have to fix something else. It may not even be a sidewalk. So it just, it's a combination of back and forth in order to get the boat going in the right direction, but you are still the one steering the boat in a direction.
So we're already making progress in that regard too, because we are supposed to go around with department heads within our wards here coming up in this month. Um, so that's already in the, in line with what you're asking for, that you'll go around with whoever, um, the representatives.
We could use a more extensive, you know, we could work more closely with all these departments, and I'm not saying we're gonna pick each other apart. I'm saying we work together to make something better.
Agreed.
Mr. Jordan, you had something?
I'm just gonna real quick comment on that, 'cause you said work together. And so this is something I'm sure my staff is tired of hearing. Since I have been here, the whole operation that I want out of this, one city, one mission.
Mr. Jordan.
Thanks, Sean, for bringing that up, reading out a statute with the duty not to interfere. In seventeen years, that's the first time I've heard it by anyone sitting up there. I wanna go back to a meeting several months ago where Laurie and Maury both come up here and read a letter. The former mayor said there's no dialogue tonight, and you all let him get away with it. Nobody said anything. And you wonder why you're in the shit mess you're in. And I said that in a coffee chat weeks ago. And it's a shame, 'cause you shouldn't be put in that, Sean, at all. But none of you up there said anything when the former mayor said that to Maury or Laurie. I don't remember which one it was. There's no dialogue tonight. You haven't had a dialogue in a long time, and that's why you're in the predicament you're in. Hopefully, Sean, if you're picked as city manager, I'm gonna support you a hundred and ten percent. You got a long road ahead. The last thing is the affidavit I read at the coffee chat. I picked that up for three dollars and seventy-five cents. Several days later, you all had a special meeting and went into an executive session. I don't know if that's what was discussed, but it's rather coincidental. If your city attorney did not have that affidavit before I brought it up, you need a new city attorney.
I wanna clarify that, because we did receive communication that the reason we don't have dialogue is you guys deserve complete and thorough answers, and I think we've done a very bad job of explaining that the process is supposed to be, that if you bring your concerns, uh, between the city clerk and the city manager, they should be taking your information, making note of what your concerns are, and then making sure we give you a complete and thorough answer that you should be followed up with. That's the expectation I have. Um, when you have your three minutes to speak, we don't engage in a conversation, because you can do more damage than good if you're speaking on something that you're not informed about, and you deserve to have a complete answer for your concerns. So I'm sorry if you feel like that hasn't happened, but those those concerns should be disseminated to the appropriate person on our staff. They should be reaching out to you um, and answering any questions. Am I correct? And I don't wanna speak out of turn. That was my understanding of the process.
Yes.
Thank you. The comment that was made that night was there's no dialogue tonight. Nobody said anything. Nobody. If you don't wanna have a dialogue, then fine. Don't have a dialogue. But when everyone in the room's thinking the same, no one's thinking. I thought it was pretty disrespectful that night when that comment happened. I was watching it at home. I've never heard a meeting, a public meeting, go off like that, where someone made a comment like that, there's no dialogue, and nobody spoke up. And that's a shame. I, this is America. I I didn't think that was supposed to happen. I don't care if you guys can't comment, 'cause you can do more damage, but no one even said thank you. No dialogue tonight.
Nicole.
Nicole Phillips, two oh six West Seventh Street. Um, just to kind of go back to the HR, um, situation that I brought up, um, back in September. Um, it is absolutely necessary. Like, I myself personally went through it. I went to my department head. I went to the city manager and I didn't find, or I didn't get a report of the findings. I was still subjected to treatment that I I left for. So it is absolutely necessary that there is some sort of direct line, not to the department heads, 'cause unfortunately that could be filtered, like I experienced. So however that needs to look, if it is an outside HR service, which, like, why can't we pay for that? Your people are your biggest asset.
Thank you. Without any, any further discussion?
I just, I wanna make one more quick comment on the committees. So some of the committees that council gets appointed to, um, like one is the Upper Arkansas Council of Governments. So per their board setup, their board has to have a council person, an elected official from the city of Florence, and then an elected official as far as somebody from the county and that type of stuff. So for those type, one of you do have to fill that in. Some of the other committees, yeah, we can look and see if that's something we need to do or not, um, like I'll be doing FEDC, but some of those, it has to be an elected official. So we'll have to be a member of council, um, and including the mayor on that, to attend those board meetings and report back on those.
Exactly.
Okay, so without further ado, then I will appoint the parking committee? Or do we wanna postpone that, sir?
That's, that's your guys' call.
I'm good. We need to get that going. You're good if he appoints the parking committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's go with the whole thing now.
Okay.
Make your appointments.
Uh, the parking committee appointments will be Maury Aves, Fran Black, Roy Harrison, Gail McKinnon, councillor Hardy from the city council. And the member from the, uh, chamber will be decided after they get a new board. So we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, and one to be added on.
Yeah, so the chamber will meet tomorrow and get their new board, and as soon as they meet, they'll give us that individual and then we can appoint.
Is there fifty-nine on the committee? The initial committee said nine? Four citizens and five from other places?
Yes, and so we're just appointing the five as far as city staff, then, uh, let's see.
If I recollect correctly, we had a terrible time. We had, uh, terrible time even getting the five members.
I think at the last meeting, there was identified, you only had three of the four citizens applying, so you didn't have the fourth citizen to apply, but I didn't think you had a problem having the other five members.
Yeah, we got the fourth citizen, which is Gail McKinnon. So two staff, me and Sam, um, council, so be Hardy. Planning commission member, I'm sorry, we do need to appoint that one. So that is going to be, uh, Matthew Stiefel. So that's who we are missing. You are correct. Thank you for pointing that out. So he'd be our planning commission representative.
Okay. No other questions, discussions on this? So moving on, we have to set a date for training with SIRS. Pardon that, Ms. Cobbler, please.
Good evening. So as you know, with us transitioning into SIRS this year, um, reached out to SIRS for some training. Um, Sam Light, who is SIRS's general counsel, has agreed to come and do some training for elected officials. So I just would like to set a date for, um, you guys, if there is any specific dates. There are two days in March, which he is unavailable, and a couple Tuesdays in February. Um, so would you, you, we could try to tack it on to another council meeting or have a special meeting, however you would like to do that, or if you're not interested in it. But I think, um, it, it sounds like what you guys were all talking about, so it sounds like a good training.
How much time does it take?
He didn't put a time on it. Um, I think he'll take whatever you guys can give. I think maybe an hour would be good, or whatever you're willing to do. He's pretty open.
I'm open after three, well, four o'clock in the afternoon most days, and then I'm off every other Friday, so.
I'm really open, so I mean, I'll work with you people who have a real job.
Crystal's the one that I think she doesn't, she needs to get, she doesn't get into town until about six, is that right?
I think so.
So maybe we do it on an evening.
Yeah, 'cause Crystal works in, uh, at the college in Pueblo.
Would Fridays be a good day? Does everybody?
Who is this individual?
Uh, Sam Light, general counsel with SIRS.
You know, in past SIRS meetings that I've attended to, generally about an hour and an hour and a half, after questions, a discussion of rules, et cetera.
And I asked him to bring handbooks, 'cause there's some nice, uh, handbooks that he has. I'm sure some of you guys aren't, may already have them, but he's gonna bring those, some of those.
We should also make sure Crystal can, I know she's supposed to have her baby soon. She was having it, is it Wednesday? Okay.
So then push it out so she can. Are you, so special, a special training meeting on a Friday? Would you guys like to do it, um, February? A Friday in February? Is there any Friday in February that somebody's not available?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, I I think so too.
The seventeenth of January through the eighteenth of February.
And I can't do February twenty-fifth, I'll be out of the town, out of town.
So February twenty-fifth and and after February seventeenth, eighteen.
Well, can we do it in Jan, like the last week in January then, the twenty, wait, wait, sorry, what do you mean?
January seventeenth to February eighteenth.
Yeah, it looks like maybe the end of January, maybe the last Friday in January.
He won't be here, he's gone. So either we get it done quickly, um, I don't know, um, what Crystal's life looks like, and do it like the fourteenth of February or of January, or we would have to wait until, um, March fourth.
We can timely set it for March fourth.
January seventeenth, is that?
That's when he, he leaves.
That's when you leave, so anytime before January, okay. Yeah, yep. Okay, I'll try to get, I'll reach out to him. If I can set it before January seventeenth, I will, uh, get with Jessica or Cortland and set that. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You gonna stay up for the next one, Laurie?
So in in front of you, uh, we have made copies of all the, uh, city manager applications. They're in the, uh, the big manila folder marked confidential, uh, meeting of next week, where we.
That would give everybody a chance to be here. Our next, uh, discussion item is resolution number twenty twenty-two oh one eighteen A. A resolution adopting an agenda, policy, and meeting rules or procedure, page forty-three.
Sure. And so with this, this is just up for discussion to see if you guys want any changes. This just kinda outlines the basic rules, how we're going to handle, um, city meetings, agendas, policy, that type of stuff. So like, I know something got, uh, brought up earlier, um, so consent agenda. If there's something on consent agenda that any councillor wants to discuss further, they should note that, then that item automatically gets pulled off a consent and will go into discussion item. So that, that'd be the process for that. Um, as far as bills allowed, those type of things. So consent agenda is set up to handle the day-to-day operations, which is the bills paid, those type of things. That's what goes under consent agenda. That's the standard for, for every city. Kenya City does that way. Um, consent agenda, bills louder are that way for the county, um, all other places. So that's the basis of consent agenda. And so this has a agenda policy, the agenda outline, uh, meeting rules or procedures, and then executive session. I know that we have discussed limiting executive session. Um, within this document is the Colorado revised statute for what uh, can go into executive session and what cannot. Our recommendation is that we limit executive session to personnel matters, matters required to be kept confidential by federal or state law or rules and regulations, specialized details of security arrangements or investigations, and conferences with an attorney for the local public body for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. A lot of the negotiation, we can do an open session. That's not a problem. Um, so one, if if, um, we get where we are going to discuss negotiations on a water tap, something we can look at on that is we can set up a certain amount of criteria that would have to be met, and then an agreement that would be signed by both parties in order to do that. So all that stuff, we can have rules and regulations, policy set forth to come in where it's nice and clear. Then we can discuss that matter open session and then move forward from there.
Discussion.
Uh, Matt had mentioned that anybody could, uh, request an executive session. Uh, say, for example, there is a employee that has a problem, something that needs to be brought to council. Can an employee who has a problem request an executive session?
An employee can request an executive session for personal matters if it falls within that category, yes.
Okay, that's one thing to keep in mind.
Mr. Nicely?
No comment.
Mr. Escabel?
No comment.
Ms. Hardy?
No comment.
I have not any comments from the public. Ma'am?
Hi, Gina Dodd. Um, I I kinda thought we talked about this with the nepotism policy. Some people pointed out proofreading. Please proofread this document before you pass it. There's just a few typos, you know? We have pledge of allegiance in here, um, personal matters instead of personnel matters. And then one that is actually, um, that can get you into an issue, because it could be a loophole for a tenant or for, um, sorry, this is actually on a different item. And then one that is actually, um, that can get you into an issue, because it could be a loophole for a tenant, or for, um, sorry, this is actually on a different item, but it goes along with proofreading. Um, no alterations to the area may occur with approval from the city, so if you guys could just proofread some of those, please, and thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So you guys have no changes that you want added to this, we'll go through and do all the proofreading and change all those little things, but outside of that, is there anything else that you guys want added or changed on this?
No, I'd like to, after the changes, make sure that we all get copies of it, before we can discuss it in a meeting. Next item is discussion regarding the renaming of Triangle Park.
So I'll defer to Counselor Vendetti on this one, as this was his request.
Okay, well, uh, it's, I, I had a video that, uh, really, you know, talked about Sergeant First Class Archuleta. People drive through our town, they see a sign on either end of the town that designates the highway, SFC Ray Adam Archuleta Memorial Highway. You have veterans, and then you have people like Ray. Ray Adam Archuleta. There are certain awards that you can only be given in a combat-type situation. For example, Purple Heart, uh, Silver Star, Bronze Star, uh, Congressional Medal of Honor, uh, and the Distinguished Service Cross. Ray got three Silver Stars, which means that he put his life on the line, he really did go out and put his life on the line, go into live, am, live, live fire. And the third time, he, uh, had to know he was gonna die, when he told the medic to take the wounded comrade. Ray is different than the average veteran. I'm a veteran, Paul's a veteran, Alan's a veteran. And, you know, we served, we did our time and so forth, but it's not to the extent that Ray Adam Archuleta did his time, I mean, he was wounded once in nineteen sixty-six, I think, uh, in, uh, was awarded a Bronze Star with the V Device. He was wounded at a time when they were not issuing Silver Stars like they did when he got the three Silver Stars in nineteen sixty-seven. But I think he deserves special recognition. And I was thinking of Triangle Park, you know, Triangle Park is right on Highway one fifteen. People see the, come into town from Canyon City, they see the, uh, signs say Ray Adam Archuleta Memorial Highway, they see that sign, and I think it would be excellent that when they come to Triangle Park, there's a sign that says Ray Adam Archuleta Memorial Park. And they can go into the park, and just, uh, I don't know what you'd call it, just like a display that says, reads from his citations, which, uh...
Have a kiosk?
Well, now, now, you know, gotta be careful with kiosks, because, you know, a, a digital kiosk, I mean, that's gonna cost you ten thousand dollars, but if you have a, like, a sign, or, I don't know, Sam can, can they do signs, or?
Monument?
Yeah, yeah, a monument, so. Well, you know, just that they can walk up and they can, they can read the, uh, the four citations that he got for these awards.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you think the family will release DV two-fourteens?
Pardon me?
Will the family release, permission for DV two-fourteens?
Well, no, I, the information on the, uh, you know, his, uh, uh, awards is all public knowledge. You know, and it's, uh... Yeah, it's, you know, 'cause I, I've gone through and, uh, actually read the awards when we did the ceremony, designating the, uh, the highway, and matter of fact, it's on the Florence Citizen webpage. Uh, everything that's involved, but, uh...
You know that, uh, the, the sign in Pioneer Park says Edson Dykes?
Yeah.
Have you seen that? That in Korea, I mean, you know, make a sign of that nature there, so it's whether, whether proven that type of thing.
Yeah, you know, it, it's like, uh, Husky Park is a happy place. Uh, what Ray did is something that, you know, people could go in and say like they lost somebody, then go there, and quiet time. It's more of a dignified experience.
Further discussion, Mr. Nicely?
I think it's a great idea, I like it.
Mr. Escabel?
I think it's a good idea, one of the Archuleta family is here, I don't know if you would have wanna comment on it, what your thoughts are.
Would you please?
I am the younger brother, Ray, and I am proud of him, but I think the highway is sufficient, the recognition, but there's other veterans also in this, uh, area that has given their life. I went to high school with a lot of these, that, uh, there's several that didn't even touch ground and get knocked. So I would rather see something that recognized all of them, rather than just singling out my brother.
Yeah, that's, uh, it's, it's like, you know, with the, uh, with the, the electronic kiosk, you know, you can actually list veterans and so forth that have, uh, lost their lives and so forth. And, uh, perhaps that could become part of the, uh, park, but I, I really think that Husky Park doesn't really fit, uh, what the recognition that these guys deserve.
Ms. Harding?
I like your vision of turning that into a nice space to recognize our veterans, whether it's, you know, sort of something more broad, to recognize all them or not, so I think it'd be a good use for that park.
Well, you know, when you, when you think of looking at, uh, veterans, you know, Florence started losing people in World War Two, there were people, there were guys that were killed, uh, Pearl Harbor and so forth. So there's several that have given their lives and so forth, and, you know, it's like, I, I was thinking the other day, it's a matter of luck and inches. If I would've been walking over another twelve inches to my right, it would've gone off underneath me, instead of next to me, whole different story. And, you know, it's like, you can make all kinds of plans and so forth for how you're gonna go into battle and so forth, and it falls apart immediately. And, uh, I think we really do need to recognize, uh, Ray for sure.
Sam?
I just, uh, I know back in the day, or a long time ago, whenever, we had a park and rec committee, I don't know when the last time it met, or something like that, maybe we ought to reform that, and be together, and come up with some ideas, as far as Triangle Park, and Husky Park, and things like that. Well, we can move forward in these parks, well, I can come up with ideas all day long. I get a vision, I'd see some things done in Triangle Park for sure, and Triangle Park, but we need to get a committee together, I think Charles already bumped out of, together, and get your visions together, bring it forward to us, or whoever needs to, uh, address these things, and give the public a vision of what you would like to see in these.
And with it, I'm all four committees, as long as they're action committees, if they're good together, have copy committees, they're a waste of our time.
I think if we continue with deadlines and goals with things, and they, we expect progress, and then as soon as it stagnates, then it just...
Yeah, I just think, you know, Triangle Park is something that, you know, there, somebody just driving through town would not go to Husky Park, would not see it. Whereas, somebody driving through town would see the sign, and pull over in that park, and look, and we can recognize other veterans there, I mean, it just, you know, 'cause like you say, you've lost, you know who you lost from Florence. You know, like in Vietnam, we lost fifty thousand.
You know, I don't, personally, I don't have a problem with it, however, I do think that we need to recognize our veterans that served in all the wars, that came from Florence, came from Penrose, came from Rockville, Coal Creek, Williamsburg, Wetmore, because I think that they are people that have paid the price to protect us. And I think it's up to us to honor these people, it really is. I know that the museum had thirty-seven people that had perished during World War Two, and, uh, we honored them, as a matter of fact, you were a voice in that. And I think that next year, they are going to honor the Korean War, if I remember correctly. But the point is that words sometimes get forgotten, but when you put a wall with designations of veterans, it's a reminder. So, you know, somebody said, well, take a look at the wall up on the airport, yeah, but that's honoring everybody, that's not just honoring the people that served us from our community. In our community, I realize that Canyon City's part of the community, but, you know, the people from Florence, you'd be surprised how many people from Florence have served in all the wars. The people from Rockville, Coal Creek, Williamsburg, who really, in all honesty, could consider themselves as Florentites. Penrose, I know the first, uh, person that we have from our community that was, if I remember correctly, was killed during Vietnam, was a young man from Penrose. That's a fact, and that's something that, you know, we can't escape. So, you know, do I have a problem with that? Probably not, but I sure don't wanna lose the aspect of us honoring all the veterans from our communities.
So we, we can get a draft together where it'd be a memorialization for all vets. Could, uh, could you, Mr. Archuleta, could he give you some input on that, could you guys inquire with him that, you know, maybe? Yeah, we can. Would you be willing to work with, with somebody like Mike, and, and help us propose something for that park? Mr. Archuleta?
I would be willing to, but, uh, like I said, I think it should take all veterans, because as Paul mentioned, there was, I can name right now at least a half a dozen from Florence High School that lost their life.
Yeah.
During the sixties, that was a bad era, when, uh, not... I would be willing to work with it.
Yeah, it's, uh, like you get veterans who, uh, served during, uh, you know, during wartime, and were put in a situation like, uh, you and Ray were, and, uh, then you've got veterans who did their two or three years and got up. I think we really need to, uh, as opposed, you know, like the wall on, uh, you know, at, at the airport, is more like everybody. Uh, my aunt's on there, I'm on there, but, you know, people who lost their lives, I think should probably be included in that park.
I don't know if anybody's seen down near the Pueblo River wall, where they've got the memorial for all the, the most Congressional Medal of Honor winners of any city in the United States, I believe, they have more there in that one little city, but it's really, really beautiful what they did, and they invested in their veterans, and it'll be forever.
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I actually knew a guy that got to CMH, and he was different. I mean, he, uh, he, he got it in Korea, he got it, his, uh, company was under attack by Chinese, uh, he went through enemy fire, carried a machine gun, uh, to the trench where the Chinese were, and killed two hundred of them. And he was different.
Okay, so we'll get some more information and figure out the best way to do it to honor all vets, and then we'll, we'll move forward from there.
Thank you. Any input from the, uh, audience? Done, then let's go to action items. Nine A Bulletin, twenty-two oh one oh three, a resolution designating the outdoor bulletin board as the official public posting location, and the Canyon City Daily Record as the official newspaper of general circulation for the city of Florence, for Florence, Colorado. Sean?
And so with this, this is a statutory requirement, um, each year, we do have to designate that public posting piece, and then the paper. Um, we have been using the Florence Citizen, um, we've always been satisfied with them, we appreciate all they do for the city of Florence, they have recently gone digital, and so that does not meet the statutory requirements for a paper of general circulation, so that's why we are going to the Canyon City Daily Record. And I just wanna make sure that's known, that it isn't, nothing else than Citizen, we, we do appreciate everything they've done, but, uh, they're just not unfortunately meeting the statutory requirements, so we gotta go with the Daily Record. At this point, I know it's been brought up about posting on the website, and, and I understand that, and we're not arguing against that point. So, on, I believe it was the twenty-second, our website is hosted by the state, they were doing maintenance, so our website was down and unavailable to the public for a while. And this last meeting agenda was posted, we put a new button up, the buttons aren't working, we have an email from here from the state that they changed things, and so all of us who have access to edit the website, lost access. So we can't get in there and fix things until we get the approval, again, from the state to get in there and edit those. We're also changing our website, we wanna go to a new host and set it up differently, where it's more user-friendly, and part of that, what we're looking to do is to set up where citizens can subscribe to an email subscription and get notified anytime anything's posted, um, whether that could be council, planning commission, um, the historic preservation commission, parking committee, whatever the case is, um, applications, whatever we have on there, they'd be able to sign up for that. And so for those reasons, like I said, we do understand, for those reasons, we're saying this year, let's not make the, the website mandatory, we will still be posting as a courtesy on the website, until we can get all those things straightened out, have our new website set up, and then, um, we, we can make it mandatory to post on the website, if, if that's how you guys wanna do it.
Discussion, Ms. Harding?
It sounds good, I don't think our, um, website is, um, is intuitive as it should be with where you find information, so that sounds great, I think you're fixing that.
Mr. Escabel?
Good job, proud of you guys.
Mr. Nicely?
I'm on board.
Mr. Vendetti?
Yeah, okay.
I'm on board. Any comment from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, um, so I actually had a heavy part, um, with putting that website together last time, uh, because the, the technology and the host we were using prior was really outdated. Um, however, I was told, just put things in order with how it was originally, that may be why it's so counterintuitive. Um, I don't know if you mean not user-friendly from the user end, or from the backend, um...
Both.
Okay, well, as far as the backend of things, um, I know that Wade and I had to go through hours of training on that, um, and so, of course, when you have new people coming in that may not have had that one-on-one training with the state, I know they're capable individuals, but they haven't had that walkthrough with those people from the state, so of course it's gonna be difficult. So I don't know how much this is costing you to switch, but I would consider looking at some training for what we already have, rather than starting over with all that manpower. Um, also, as far as the website, um, we do have a PR person, is that correct?
Not, not a full-time designated PR person, but...
What are the other positions for that person?
Deputy city clerk.
Grant writer, utility billing, um, and HR tech.
So we do have an HR tech, that's interesting. Um, so, my point being, um, if the PR is part of it, and it is, I really do like the graphics that are put on Facebook and things like that, so great job with that. There's obvious capability there, I think we just need to invest in what we have, um, and as far as the website is concerned, I don't know why we're pushing it off to the Daily Record, rather than, you said that we're gonna put it on there as a courtesy. I don't know why we don't just go ahead and do it on the website, that's controlled by us, because, because people don't know to go to the Daily Record.
So with, with the Daily Record, it's publications, we have legal publications that have to go in the paper. So the ordinance, those type of things, they have to go into paper of, of general circulation, and so that's why we're going with the Daily Record. Those type of things, they have to go into paper of, of general circulation. And so that's why we're going with the Daily Record.
See, and that makes sense.
It's, it's tied to, but it's a separate issue. It's not the agendas and that type of thing. It's all the other legal notices for public hearings and those type of things.
Yes, that makes sense to me, but the way it was worded sounded like public meetings, and those notices will be going that way as well because of the statutory requirement. And so I just wanted to clear that up. But if we're going to be talking about transparency, and I know a lot of people ran for their positions on transparency and wanting things to be accessible to people. I, I don't know that it's a good idea to not make it a requirement that it go on the website. I know that the intent is there to put it on there, but perhaps a requirement just for checks and balances.
I would just be concerned that we ran into technical issues and then we violate our own policy. If something happens, like with the paper, we're guaranteed to meet what we've promised the, to meet the requirement, but if we lean, if we lean on the technology and we write it as mandatory, my understanding would be if we just have one problem that prevents us from updating the website, we've now violated what we said we would do.
I understand that, but you could also put some language in there that say, you know, unless there's some sort of technical fallacy or something like that. But as far as getting it on the website, it was not posted on the website. I checked today. I had to go in person to get it. It may be on there from your end because you can see it from that end, but it's not on the Google Drive to where public has access to it.
Thank you. Mr. Aves?
A couple of things. I'd love to be on a push text and a push email that you could opt in to receive these things, even though that wouldn't be an official copy. I read the Florence Citizen every week to read those notices to keep in touch with what's happening in the town. Even if we publish them in the Daily Record to meet the paper requirement, could we not have them publish them electronically as a secondary copy? Would not be your formal copy, but it would be the same data, because I don't want to go buy another paper to read those every week. I'd like to read them online, read a lot of my stuff online. So again, I'd like to see them maybe secondarily published online with the Florence Citizen. And secondly, would like to have a push system for special meetings, especially these 24-hour announcements. I know we caught quite a few over the last few years with Mike involved, but it's only because somebody walked by the board, saw it, and started calling everybody. Should be pushed. There's going to be a special executive session on this subject and when the day is and what the time is, and something that you can get quickly. And both texting and email are two ways to do that. Thanks.
Any further discussion?
I don't get the Canyon City Daily Record. I think it's an outrageous price to have to pay for it. One of the best little papers I know of in Fremont County is The Crusader. And they're not very expensive and they put a lot of nice information out there.
They've gone electronic too. They've done publishing paper.
And that's the problem. So for, to meet the lega, the legalities of it for notices, we're going to have to go to the Daily Record because the digital circulation does not meet the statutory requirements. So if it did, we would love to stay with the Florence Citizen. That wouldn't be a problem. We're, like I said, we've always been very happy with them, but unfortunately it just doesn't meet that regulation, so.
Sir?
We'd be happy. If you wanted to email them to us, we publish them to the site regardless of obligation or not. We'd be gladly do that. So if that is necessary, we'd gladly, we'd create a landing page just for the city of, whatever we need to, we'd gladly do it as a Florence Citizen. If that'd help in any way to resolve things as we make a transition or whatnot, so.
If there's no further discussion, could I please have a motion on Resolution twenty twenty-two oh one oh three A?
I make a, a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh one dash oh three A.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Nicely?
Um, I'm abstaining on that.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Now we go down to Action Item nine B, Resolution Number twenty twenty-two oh one oh three B. A resolution adopting fees and general rules for space rented within the city hall.
Sir?
So this is just a resolution, there's some general rules for anybody that's going to lease space, and then the two costs we presented. And we had discussion about just doing nonprofits or opening it up for both. It was decided by council that we wanted both, so these are the recommended fees from staff on that. And if you guys want any changes, then we can change as noted. So the cost, I can, I can give the cost, nonprofits would be 360 annually, for-profit business would be 25 percent foot of leased space on a monthly basis. All leases will be yearly with exception for go month to month for certain ones. Like with this year right now, we've got Jenny Cristili in there with the insurance. Unfortunately, she was part of the building that burned down. So she's not looking to be long-term here, so that'd be one that we could go month to month with on that type of situation. This would just be setting the fees and then we can get the leases and all that stuff set in place.
Discussion, Mr. Vendetti?
Uh, none.
Mr. Nicely?
None.
Mr. Escobell?
None.
Ms. Harding?
Just making sure where it says for-profit businesses that we make sure it's clear that that's annually also, because that was my question with the way it's like typed out at the bottom, was that it doesn't, it says annually.
We can add that on there.
Yeah, just so that's clear. Thank you.
You know, I think the only question I had was that are we, are the people renting spaces from the, from our building? Is there any requirements for them meeting the heating, electricity, lights, et cetera?
And so that's going to be part, that'll be included in their, their lease cost, the utilities and then
So $360, would it include that for the whole month?
Is that a month or a year?
A year.
Nonprofits a year.
A year, a yearly cost.
I was just curious about what our average spaces, size is, what that would be for someone. Do you have any?
They, they kind of vary. We have some that have bigger spaces, some that have smaller, so.
Further discussion? None? Input from the citizens? Yes, ma'am.
Nicole Phillips to Six West Seventh Street. I just wanted to bring up, I see Mr. Brian Allen isn't here tonight, and I know that he had concerns whenever this had come up before in question, so I don't know if it would be better to wait until, you know, to make sure he has the answers he needs. Yeah, just an observation.
No further discussion? May I have a motion to accept Resolution Number twenty twenty-two oh one oh three B?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two oh one oh three B, a resolution adopting fees and general rules for space rented within the city hall.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Nicely?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
A reluctant yes. Onto nine C, Flood Plane Study Memorandum of Agreement.
And so what this is, this is just a memorandum of agreement between the city and the state. So the state is sending some people down. They're going to be doing some studies on certain areas within the floodplain. Those are listed within that documentation that you guys got. So this is just agreeing to, that they're going to do that study, and so once they do that study, then it may change what properties are located within floodplains, which could be adding properties or taking properties out. Hopefully it's taking properties out, but we'll have to wait and still see what the study is, is complete on that. So this would be just agreeing to those sections that they're going to study.
Discussion, Mr. Escobell?
None.
Ms. Harding?
No.
Mr. Vendetti?
None.
Mr. Nicely?
Yeah, will this study give us any direction as to how to improve our fluid flood plan? Is that was sort of the notion, I thought we'd talked about this before, that, you know, there, there's certain areas of the city that are uninsurable or in the floodplain, but we could change that, you know, by, you know, not just elevating one area or putting a levee in another area, but excuse me.
But just, is, is there any recommendations they could give us to?
So I don't know if this study's going to have those recommendations. I'll reach out to them and see and get back to you on that. I don't know if it would be, this is just be studying those areas, and so there may be some recommendations on that, but it's going to be hard to say.
Just a question, do we know who's doing the study?
The state of Colorado.
The state of Colorado? Because I know the Army Corps of Engineers has a very complex study of that, so.
Yeah. And then so with it, it depends on what the study finds, and there may be, so with floodplains, you're going to have a LOMAR or LOMA. A LOMA is a letter of map adjustment. A LOMAR is matter, letter of map adjustment revision. So there's two kinds of different things, and so that's where properties can be added in or out or changed in the zone. Whether it's Zone X, Zone A, Zone B, whether it's an 100-year flood plain, 50-year flood plain, 200-year flood plain, whatever the case may be. And so that will kind of adjust that. And then with that, we can, we can always look at ways we can improve and hopefully get some properties out. Because with that, two is, so each year we do an I S O rating, which is the basis for how that insurance is broke down and what those costs are going to be. And so if we have stricter regulations, we have more up-to-date building codes, we have those type of things. And we're doing different things with floodplains, then that can affect the insurance rates for the citizens for all the properties that are located within those floodplains and that type of stuff. And so we, we want to do, look at that and see what we can do to hopefully lower those costs. Like I said, we can always, so Fremont County last year, I believe, adopted the 2018 building codes. Canyon City adopted 2018 building codes with amendments. We're on the 2006s. We may want to look eventually, move it up a year or two on that, just to help out with those. But we don't want to necessarily go the 2018 or the 2021 where we're raising building costs where it's two or three times the amount that it costs to build now and then further slow in any, any growth either. So we just kind of want to look at that balance.
Any further discussion, counsel? Any input from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the Flood Plane Study Memorandum of Agreement.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Flood Plane Study Memorandum of Agreement.
May I have a second?
Second.
No further discussion? Then roll call, please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Nicely?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes.
Any upcoming agenda items?
Upcoming agenda items, we will have a preliminary plat and a final plat coming to for, for approval. And we will have the Resolution Adopting the Agenda and Policy Meeting Rules that'll be under an action item. And then we may have a few others. We're just kind of working some, some stuff out and make sure those are going to get done.
Counsel, any items that you wish to add? None?
Okay, we are requesting one executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to C R S twenty-four six dash four oh two. I'm asking to invite the Deputy City Clerk, the Police Chief, and the Finance Administrator slash H R Administrator Lori Koppler.
Any discussion before we make, I would accept the motion to go into executive session? None? May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Will I make a motion we go into executive session?
Second.
No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nicely?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes.
So after a five-minute break, we will go into executive session.